Also start Granicus. We are, we are live.
This call is now being recorded.
Okay, today is May the twenty seventh, Thursday, May the twenty seventh, twenty twenty. And I want to welcome everyone to the first virtual meeting of the Economic and Workforce Committee of the LA City Council. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Price.
Present.
Councilmember Buscaino.
Here.
And Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Three members present in a quorum, sir.
Thank you, thank you, colleagues. We will now open the public comments for the meeting. Speakers will be given one minute per item or two minutes for, for multiple items. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you please read the call information?
Yes, Mr. Chair. To offer a public comment on our items today, please call the number six nine 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 hundred six eight eight three three and use meeting ID number nine eight seven zero eight nine nine four one seven three when prompted. And I'll repeat that one more time, that's meeting ID number nine eight seven zero eight nine nine four one seven three. Thank you.
Okay, um. So caller, please state your name and which item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jamal Foster. I was calling to speak on item twelve on the agenda.
Okay, go ahead. You've got one minute.
Um, basically, I'm just requesting that the city is like lifting the fifteen plus five percent cap on the food delivery. It's, uh, it's like, it's, it's, it's gonna impose like a lot of extra stuff on people like myself that actually do Postmates and, and, uh, Uber Eats and DoorDash, things like that. Cause right now they're paying upwards of like thirty dollars an hour if they're, if, you know, if they have to, if they get taxed anymore, they're gonna just pull out of Los Angeles and it's gonna just affect like the, the people that actually live in Los Angeles that take advantage of this service, you know? So, um, I would just request that we let the restaurants figure it out themselves, like figure out that the whole, you know? But, yeah, that's, that's pretty much all I was talking about.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comment. Next, please. Next caller, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and which item you'd like to speak on. Anyone there? Caller, please state your name and which item you'd like to speak on. Okay, we currently have a little more speakers on the queue. Again, let's ask, we'll ask again to callers to state your name and which item you'd like to speak on. Well, you better want a chance to participate that chooses to do so.
Mr. Chair, do the callers need to, um, push like star six to unmute themselves?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Technical expertise on the line, though.
I don't know, Mr. Clerk.
Has anyone muted?
The instructions I have is that they press the pound sign and then they press that pound sign again when prompted for the participant ID. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Again, let's ask, callers, please state your name and which item you'd like to speak on if you are within the, if you can hear my voice. Okay, well, we got one call. Any other calls? Again, asking any callers to please state your name and which item you'd like to speak on. Okay, we have a little more speakers on the queue, so if there are no objections, we're gonna close public comment, uh, at this time. Colleagues, I can move the following items on consent. Items one through eleven, item seventeen and item nineteen. There are no objections. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Price.
Aye.
Councilmember Buscaino.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Those items have passed.
Okay, thank you. So next item is, uh, item fifteen, please read that into the record.
Item number fifteen is report from the Chief Legislative Analyst relative to Council District Ten Small Business Relief, uh, Relief Fund Emergency Micro Loan Pro, Program Status.
Hello, councilmembers, this is Clay McCarter with the CLA's office. The CLA report before you is in response to motion, Weston Price, which directed the creation of a small business relief program for businesses located in the tenth council district to be funded by an allocation of seven hundred and fifty thousand in the district's AB twelve ninety account. The CLA recommends this funding be transferred to EWDD's existing small business emergency loan program and be used to, for providing loans to businesses located in the district. All loans would be subject to EWDD's existing loan terms, including a loan amount between five thousand and twenty thousand dollars, the possibility of zero percent interest, a, a repayment deferral and no fees. Our report also includes some, some data on the, the status of the loan fund. That data is a bit out of date as of now, but I can say that as of May eleventh, there's been almost four thousand applications received and two thousand six hundred and fifty of them have yet to be reviewed. Assuming all of the applicants that request a loan of seventeen thousand, which is the average that EWDD's been seeing so far, this represents a total need of more than sixty five million, which is six times the current funding available, which is eleven million, comprised of ten million from the reserve fund and another million dollars in, in CDBG and some, uh, old enterprise zone resources that EWDD controls. So EWDD has recently relaxed underwriting requirements that will enable them to use existing staff to approve approximately a hundred loans per week. At this rate, all existing loan funding would be expended in four weeks, bringing the total number of businesses assisted to about six hundred. Should new funding not be added to the program, over two thousand businesses who have applied will not have their applications re, uh, reviewed and will not receive assistance. So based on, on that, looking at the staffing models, we actually recommend that the committee delete recommendation four from our report because EWDD now has the appropriate staff to expend all the loan funds that they currently have in the next four weeks. And that concludes my report. Be happy to take questions.
Members, any questions this time? Hey, seeing that, I'd like to recommend that we approve the CLA report recommendations as amended. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Um, so when you discussed the, uh, applications that were received and you indicated the, uh, it was, uh, I believe seven hundred and fifty thousand, the four thousand applications, was that exclusively from CD ten? Or are they citywide since the ten million dollar fund was a citywide fund?
This, I, I'm, you broke up at the beginning, but I, I believe you're talking about the, the seven hundred and fifty thousand that would just, that would just be for CD ten businesses.
Right. Correct. But, so when you're talking about the numbers, uh, of applications, are you talking specifically for CD ten or are you speaking, uh, generally for the entire, for the entirety of the fund? That was also a citywide allocation.
When I speak about the numbers, that's the, the entire city.
Got it. Okay. And you said the demand for that is, would, uh, would be estimated at roughly sixty five million dollars based on what the current application load is?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, I know this committee and, and full city council supported an effort on a comprehensive sidewalk vending program. Do we know, uh, if any of our sidewalk vendors have taken advantage of this micro loan program?
I would not have that information, but if someone from EWDD is on the call, they could provide that.
That would be helpful.
Hi, good afternoon, this is Daisy from EWDD. Um, so far, we have not had any sidewalk vendors, uh, reviewed and approved. Uh, we still have a lot of pending applications that we still need to go through, so we may have applications from sidewalk vendors, but we haven't had any yet that we reviewed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, uh, recommend that we approve the CLA report recommendations as amended to delete recommendation of the four. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Price.
Aye.
Councilmember Buscaino.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
That item is approved as amended.
Okay, um, let's, uh, shift to item fourteen. Mr. Clerk, item fourteen.
Okay, item number fourteen is a report from the Economic and Workforce Development Department relative to the feasibility of implementing a zero interest loan program for local businesses and initiating a grant program to support small businesses affecting, um, experiencing difficulties paying their employees due to lost revenue from COVID nineteen.
Thank you. Uh, you and the past myself, Councilman Decoian and, uh, and others have championed the initiation of this emergency loan fund. We dedicated eleven million dollars to the effort. EWDD is on the line. Can you provide the committee with some updated information on this program? How many businesses have been, have applied? How many loans made? What's the average loan amount is?
Certainly. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Price. This is Sam Hughes with the Economic and Workforce Development Department. Uh, good to hear you all's voice. Uh, just by way of background, and it's been said, uh, the city established the Small Business Emergency Micro Loan Program to essentially help stem the negative impact of COVID nineteen, uh, particularly the impact that it's had on small business community at large. And the program provides financing needed to strengthen small businesses to help continue or reestablish their business operations and retain their employees. The eleven million in funding for the program offers loans citywide to businesses affected by COVID nineteen. And business owners can apply for loan amounts between five thousand and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, currently, EWDD has over twenty one thousand prospective borrowers applying for emergency micro loans through the online application system. To date, uh, the department has received nearly forty two hundred applications, which are in various stages of review, approval and funding. I want to reiterate that just for a moment and distinguishing the twenty one thousand eight from the, uh, forty two hundred. Uh, the twenty one thousand eight, those are the folks that are trying, theoretically trying to hit send, trying to hit submit, and they could very well simply have typed in a name, typed in an address and walked away, or maybe they got fifty percent of the application complete and did not submit. But for those that have submitted applications, the number is north of four thousand. And again, they're in various stages of review. Uh, the department has approved two hundred and thirteen loans and with, with its recently enhanced administrative processes mentioned earlier, is expected to increase, uh, the number of approvals, uh, to between eighty to a hundred per week. Um, to date of the eleven million, we have funded, um, a hundred and fifteen loans totaling just south of two million dollars. And so, uh, thankfully, we've made some adjustments that will allow us to expedite.
How many, I'm sorry, how many loans, Sam?
Yeah, great. So we have over two hundred and fifteen approved. Of that amount, one hundred and fifteen loans or thereabouts have actually been funded, and I'm distinguishing the approval from the funding. Um, but thankfully, with the, um, adjustments that we've made to the underwriting process, uh, we're gonna increase the approval numbers significantly and we'll have a corresponding increase in the number of loans funded. Um, and I think that'll evidence itself in, in the coming, in the coming, um, in the coming week or so, uh, particularly as we continue to approve at the clip or the pace in which we just recently started. And I might add that the, uh, enhanced or adjusted underwriting criteria recently came into play. So, um, late last week, uh, we made the adjustment and we're already seeing, um, market increase in the number of approvals. And, uh, Daisy Hernandez spoke to that, I think, a bit earlier, um, if not, and certainly, um, I'm speaking to it now. I think, uh, with all.
What do, what do those adjustments look like, Sam? What, what are we doing differently now that's, uh, yielding more applications or more, more successful applications?
Sure. Um, broadly speaking, uh, our underwriting criteria, some may have included that it was maybe more onerous than it should have been, um, in terms of the number of documents that our underwriters were reviewing, the type of review that they were, um, embarking upon, uh, whether it's, um, you know, looking at the eleven twenties for, uh, corporate corporations versus sole, sole proprietorship seeds, schedule Cs, and just doing the analysis, the debt coverage ratio analysis and a lot of financial analysis that, um, we thought was necessary, um, we found that under the current circumstance, particularly with COVID and the desperate need that many of the borrowers have, that we need to come up with a, um, a more creative way to more effectively get the money out and still be responsible, uh, but certainly, um, get it out in a timely manner. And so, uh, we made that adjustment most recently and again, we're seeing market uptick in the number of approvals and, um, the funding, uh, will roll in as well. So, uh, we've done that and, um, we feel pretty good about it, Councilmember, and, and hopefully, uh, we'll, businesses will get the money they need. I think, um, one of the things that should also be noted is the priority that we're giving to different businesses. A particular report, that's before the body talks about how we're prioritizing our efforts. And currently, we're prioritizing applications for businesses with one hundred employees or less, uh, based on the date that the application was received and the type of industry. Um, priority is given to vulnerable industries affected by the mayor's safer at home order such as restaurants and retail food facilities prohibited from serving food to dining customers, gyms and retail stores, uh, just sort of to give you an idea. Furthermore, to ensure equitable distribution of the emergency loan funds to small businesses throughout the city, EWDD established an additional priority criteria, uh, for, uh, the review of loan applications to include business location. And so, we're using a proportionate percentage formula based on the city's Office of Finance Records of active business tax registration certificates, the BTRCs, for each council district. And so, just by way of example, if a council district has seven and a half percent of the registered businesses citywide, our goal is at a minimum is to use seven and a half percent of the loan funds to assist businesses in that district. And so, again, we're, we're, we're trying to sort of level the playing field. There are limited funds and certainly the demand is outpacing, um, the, the amount of dollars that we have, um, available to lend. Um, and we're, we're, again, there's, there are a whole lot of folks that certainly want the money and our marketing strategy in large part was the announcement, when it occurred, I think, um, March seventeenth. And, uh, we got a huge influx of, uh, prospective borrowers that came in and certainly there have been other efforts underway. In addition to the emergency loan program, it's worth noting, the department also offers the Community Development Block Grant Micro Loan Program, our current EDA revolving loan fund and a Section one oh eight Small Business Loan. And so, these and other loan programs are marketed through the department's website as well as through our nine business source centers, um, and partnerships the department has recently developed with, uh, the LA Chamber of Commerce, Bixwell Exchange and the LA EDC. Um, lastly, I think it's also worth noting, uh, pursuant to an earlier motion, that we continue to offer payment forbearance to existing small business borrowers, um, as approved by council on, on, on the twenty fourth. So currently, thirteen loans that were funded prior to COVID nineteen are, uh, approved for parents to have some speed. And so, and by the way, all emergency loans have a payment, a permanent period of up to twelve months. And that type of relief certainly assists businesses that are dealing with, um, a reduction in activity, a reduction in revenue and to borrow money and immediately have to start paying within thirty days of borrowing the same. And certainly, um, stretch the limits of one's patience and certainly the checkbook. And so, um, our loan program offers that twelve month deferral, which, you know, this will give you cash, I think it goes a long way just to, um, relieve some of the pressure that, that business owners are experiencing.
Well, it's an important program. All of our loan programs are important, but as you said, they don't mean a thing if no one knows about it or if we're not getting the word out. And I would just recommend, as I usually do, in addition to the usual suspects, you also touch base with some of the ethnic chambers, uh, that can also, I think, be very effective in getting the word out to members about resources that are available, uh, as we, as we're working closely with our, our workforce centers and our business source centers. Um, members, any questions? Any other questions? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to, uh, we're gonna recommend that we note and file the EWDD report. Uh, Sam, we're gonna look forward to hearing from you again, again, next month. It's so important that we really track this and, and that we all are concerned, not only about the loans being made in our districts, but citywide and, and making sure this is a resource that helps us to rebuild, uh, after the, uh, after the crisis.
I concur. Thanks, and we'll stand by, ready to report back.
Okay, we're gonna reopen the public comment on item, uh, twelve.
Mr. Chair.
Well, hold on, we're gonna open it up on, on everything. Uh, we, we had some technical difficulties, that's why I wanna make sure, uh, that we have given opportunity for individuals to, to comment. Did you have a comment on that?
Well, for item, or did we want to take a roll call vote? Or do you want to, um, take general public or public comment for all items and then we would just rehear all items that have been heard?
Uh, which do you recommend?
I recommend that we hear public comment on all items and then reconsider them after the public comment.
Okay, we shall do it that way. So we, we're gonna reopen the public comment then on all the items? And, uh, let me ask you to please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. We'll take the next caller in line, please. Is that a caller? Again, is there a caller on the line? Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Okay, next speaker. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. I hear somebody breathing.
Uh, hola.
Hola. Your, your name?
Si, mi nombre, mi nombre es Marisol. Allo?
Allo.
Si, estoy llamando por el artículo veinte cero cuatro setenta. Como residente del sur de Los Ángeles, no quiero ver a nuestra comunidad perder ningún restaurante. Los tiempos creo que ya son difíciles y espero que por favor no limite las tarifas tan bajas porque afectaría a las empresas. Propiedad de la comunidad que aún están cerradas. Creo que no hay necesidad de apurar esta tarea.
Señora, please. Un momento, por favor. A, a little slower.
Perdón, un momento, pueden empezar desde nuevo y empezar a, este, que está, uh, qué artículo está platicando y me lo puede ser un poquito más lento, por favor? Oh, claro, este, mi nombre es Marisol. Y estoy llamando. ¿Y en qué artículo está llamando? El veinte cero cuatro setenta. Veinte cero cuatro setenta? Tiene que ir dando. Permítanme un segundo, señora. Si, no te preocupes. No sabe el, el número del artículo o nomás veinte cero setenta? Es el veinte guion cero cuatro setenta. Es para limitar, uh, que no limiten las tarifas tan bajas porque afectarán a las empresas y los restaurantes. Okay, perfecto. Okay, so she's calling on item twenty four, it's twenty four seventy six, um, and this is regarding the taxes that are to those on, uh, delivery services. Por favor, continúe. Okay, si nada más para esto, para, estoy de aquí del sur de Los Ángeles y la verdad no quiero ver a nuestra comunidad perder ningún restaurante. Los tiempos creo que ya son difíciles y para que no limiten las tarifas tan ba. She's calling from south central Los Angeles and she doesn't want to see, um, the community deteriorate nor any of the businesses, their financial stability. Por favor, continúe. Sí, eh, eso, que no limiten las tarifas tan bajas porque afectaría a las empresas, la propiedad de la comunidad que aún están, uh, cerradas. No necesidad creo de, de apagar otra vez, por cierto. She just, uh, would ask that there wouldn't be, uh, such low taxes that may would affect small businesses in the community. Es solo, señora? Si, muchas gracias por la traducción. Muchísimas gracias por llamarme.
Thank you.
Hasta luego, gracias.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Next speaker, please. Your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Next speaker, please.
Um, yes, my name is April.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, which item would you like to speak on?
Yeah, item twelve.
Okay.
I'm calling to ask that the. Okay, thank you for that. I'm calling to ask that the city council remove the fifteen plus five percent cap on food delivery app and in its place allow for restaurants to negotiate their own fees. If this cap goes through, thousands of jobs will be lost and more people living in Los Angeles will be unemployed. Food delivery services like Postmates that offer PPE, good pay for drivers up to thirty dollars an hour, will have to pull out of Los Angeles. Postmates also gives a chance to restaurants that other food delivery services like Uber don't give a chance to. Let the market figure out themselves and said, open up the restaurants now. And that's it. Thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Larson and I'm calling on, uh, item number eleven, um, council file number two zero dash zero four seven zero. Um, I called last week and I spoke on the first round, um, and, uh, I just wanted to reiterate my point that I've been making Postmate deliveries in Los Angeles for the last four years. Uh, I've been doing this full time, this is my job, I do this full time and in that time, I've done over seventeen thousand deliveries. In fact, I just looked at my stats on my app right now and I've done a total number of seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine deliveries in my career as a Postmate. That's almost eighteen thousand deliveries in total and if you do the math on that, that's about forty-five hundred deliveries per year. So I do a lot, I do a high volume, I'm a very high volume Postmate. This is my job and it's a, it's a business. I'm a small business person. This is my business. I go out there and I hustle and I make the money and it's my job and this is how I support myself. I have been doing this, uh, again, full time for about four years and I, I've seen it, the system works. It's awesome. I'm able to, you know, go out there and kick butt and then help people out, uh, especially in the pandemic now, it's, 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 it was crazy. Uh, in the very beginning, the restaurants, they were like thankful, they were like.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your comment, your time is up. Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is German. Speaking on agenda item number eleven, council file two zero dash zero four seven zero. I would like to.
I would like to share my story and would like for it to be considered when making a decision on the previously stated agenda. As a food delivery-
Hi, my name is German, and I'm speaking on agenda item number 11, council file 20-0470. I would like to share my story and would like for it to be considered when making a decision on the previously stated agenda. As a food delivery driver like myself and others in my community working like me, we depend on this source of income because we have families to support. We want to make our income by working on our own schedule and time around our families. We may choose not to be another number on the statistics looking for unemployment benefits or government aid. Many people in our community depend on drivers like myself because they have a busy schedule or don't have access to transportation. As a member of the armed forces, this is a job where I can continue to serve my community while having the flexibility to generate income and spend time with my family. Nothing further.
This is Renee Roland from Pawpack. Can anyone hear me?
Marissa, please unmute your microphone for the council member.
Hello, next speaker, please. State your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Next speaker, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Renee Roland, Pawpack, item 12. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I'm chair of Pawpack. It's the State Committee for Animal Advocacy and Legislation. We approached the council with the motion for item 12 for the live animal market. It's an issue that Pawpack has been addressing since the mid-'90s, starting in the Bay Area. Other measures were taken in the state for-
Excuse me, this is, excuse me, this is the Economic Development Committee meeting? I think you were interested in the-
Oh, I received a Zoom ID number for a health, et cetera, meeting. Is this the right meeting?
Correct, that was earlier. That was earlier, this is today.
Okay, I got the notice after the item was addressed and I was still hoping to call-
I'm sorry, this is the Economic Development Committee.
Oh, I understand now. I didn't know you were in a different meeting with the same ID number. Okay, so sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. State your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Next speaker, please.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Hello.
Hi.
Yes, we can. State your name.
My name is Yanine. I'm calling in regards to item 20-0470. As a resident of South LA, I do not want to see our community lose any restaurants. Times are really rough right now, and I basically just wanted to call to ask that we do not cap rates so that low-income, excuse me, so that we do not, I was hoping that we would not cap rates so that low-community-owned businesses close. Postmates is a company that grants the public and me access to deliveries for things like food, groceries, medicine, and hardware from the comfort of my own home, and I am one of the beneficiaries using Postmates, especially now with everything going on with the pandemic. So, I just basically wanted to ask that you say no to cap rates below 23% so that we don't hurt our low-income communities of color. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. State your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Katie McEwen, speaking on item number 18.
Okay, go ahead, you've got one minute.
Great. Good afternoon, Katie McEwen, staff attorney with Public Council, part of the LA Street Vending Campaign. We're encouraged by the conversations about how to include street vendors and adjust recovery. However, the motion in front of you should go further. In an October 2019 letter, we detailed how many of the vendors we work with make under 16,000 a year, making a high permit fee a significant barrier to legalization. Since the pandemic hit, the economic situation for many has only gotten more dire. Many vendors have not been able to work at all, and many vendor households have not received any small business or government support. Vendors should be supported as they attempt to revive their business, and the city should be thinking about how to welcome vendors into formalization and legalization, not putting up barriers to entry. We know what happens when vendors are shut out of the formal economy. They are vulnerable to harassment, abuse, and they are put in a position where they cannot weather emergencies just like this one. As such, the-
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
My name is Alfred Foster, and I'm calling about item 12. I'm calling to ask the city council to remove the 15 plus 5% cap on the food delivery apps and in its place allow the restaurants to negotiate their own fees. If the cap goes through, thousands of jobs will be lost and more Los Angelinos will be unemployed. Food delivery services like Postmates and other PPEs, good pays for drivers up to $30 an hour, that are pulled out of Los Angeles. Postmates will also give the chance to restaurants and other food delivery services like Uber to, that don't give a chance, let the market figure themselves out and instead, open up the restaurants now.
All right, sir, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Next speaker, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name. Next speaker, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I'm sorry.
We can hear you. Please state your name.
Yes, Elaine Libsy Fassel, and it's about wet markets.
I'm sorry, ma'am, that was a previous committee meeting?
It was.
And it was not on our agenda. This is the Economic Development Committee?
Yes, okay, then I don't understand what I'm doing, so obviously I'm too incompetent to follow it. Thank you very-
No, you're not. That was a previous meeting, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Okay, do we have any other calls?
No.
Okay, we appear to have no more calls on the queue, so we will close public comment. Mr. Clerk, let me ask you how we should be, do you want to proceed?
Yes, so this reconsider all the items that were approved and approved as amended. That would be items number one through 11. Items number 14, 17, and 19 were approved, and item number 15 was approved as amended. Should I take the roll call vote on those?
Yes.
So, council member Price?
Aye.
Council member Buscaino?
Aye.
And council member Rodriguez?
Aye.
So, those items are approved.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
And we still have, let's see, we have items number 12, 13, 16, and 18. Which item would you like to go to, Mr. Chair?
Next item, item 12.
Item number 12, okay. So, item number 12 is a report from the city attorney and ordinance relative to establishing a temporary limit on the charges imposed by third-party delivery services on retail food establishments during the COVID-19 epidemic and for 90 days after the city's order prohibiting on-premises dining is lifted.
Thank you. As I said at the council meeting last week, I've worked on with the author of this motion, Councilman Farrell and others, to craft a balanced policy regarding capping the fees for third-party delivery companies. We have before us today the results of a compromise that, an ordinance I think that we can send to the council. Valerie Flores from the city attorney's office is on the line. Valerie, thank you for joining us. I've got a couple of questions before I ask my colleagues to comment. We looked at the New York model when we crafted our policy recommendations. How does that ordinance, how does the ordinance before us today compare to what New York passed months ago?
Yes. Good afternoon, council member. So, there are some differences, although our draft ordinance was modeled on the New York legislation. Like New York, we cap the delivery fee in the draft ordinance at 15%, but allow an additional 5% to the delivery service for other types of non-delivery items like promotions or service fees, commissions, so it would be a total cap of 20. Where it differs is that we provide a cure period for the app. If it inadvertently charges too much, that can be, someone can alert the app service and they get 15 days to cure the difference between what was paid and what should have been paid. We also have a series of disclosures that are required so that the customers know what's being charged and who's receiving the payment. So, in the draft ordinance, the customer knows how much is going to the delivery app, how much is going to the restaurant, and how much is going to the driver. In this ordinance, also, the driver's tip or gratuity, which most customers intend to have go to the driver who's actually delivering the food, this ordinance will mandate that that tip or gratuity does stay completely with the driver. Our ordinance also provides a, similar to the right of recall ordinance recently passed by the city council, it allows a private right of action, and again, there is that cure period prior to a lawsuit becoming ripe.
As you mentioned, our ordinance provides that 100% of the tips go to the drivers. Is there anything we can do to further protect these workers, and how about enforcement of this rule?
Right, so, one of the features of our ordinance that we also believe protects the drivers in addition to guaranteeing that their tips have to be paid 100% to the driver is the disclosure. So, people, consumers will know what portion of their total payment for the delivery will go to the driver versus the restaurant versus the app. And in that way, we are protecting the driver from any kind of mislabeling where people think they're paying money to the driver that might accidentally go to the app. Now the consumer will know, and that has the effect of protecting the drivers along with, again, the provision that their tips go exclusively to the drivers. And there is also the cure period for, again, if there's any inadvertent mischarge, either the driver or the restaurant can notify the delivery app that there's been a mischarge and the delivery app has 15 days to come into compliance before any lawsuit would ripen.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, a question.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Ms. Flores, just had a question on the sunset of this proposed ordinance here. It indicates it will end 90 days after onsite dining is allowed again. Does that, any onsite dining? Does it have to be at full capacity for each establishment or any capacity, say, based on the health orders from the county?
Well, currently, it would mean the resumption of on-premise indoor dining. However, as a companion to the request to the city attorney's office to draft the ordinance, there was a report back requested from the CLA's office to explore whether restaurants are able to fully rebound with whatever reopening orders come into place, and there could be an opportunity then for the council to change the sunset period of the ordinance if it turns out, for example, that there are very stringent social distancing rules that prohibit the restaurant from having a very robust onsite dining, and therefore they're still very reliant on delivery, then the council could adjust that temporary cap to those circumstances, and I think that's why the CLA report back was requested. It's important to have a tie to COVID and set a specific termination date for the ordinance, but again, as long as COVID effects are still impacting restaurants, the council can always change that sunset date.
Yeah, because I'm hearing that the restaurants will soon be reopening and anticipating an announcement from the county in the coming days, so say if restaurants are due to reopen on Monday of next week, the time begins 90 days from Monday, correct?
Right, but again, the council will have the benefit of the CLA report, and I'm sure one of the, the CLA asked to report on whether this ordinance is still needed even after, you know, the reopening, and they can measure the effects of, again, any social distancing rules or customer apprehension and whether the delivery fees are still needed to be capped at that point.
Okay, because there has been some serious concerns from the delivery apps that, oh yeah, I'll believe it when I see it, we have made a commitment that 90 days is 90 days, that, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, and I know we had a robust discussion in council on this item, so just want to be sure that moving forward, Mr. Chair, I know you're the leading force, you and Mr. Farrell behind this, that we say what we mean in moving forward.
Absolutely, and I think we'll have a chance to really monitor that over the next 90 days, and I think we all are going to be watching it very closely. Mrs. Rodriguez, any comments?
No, sir, I think you've covered it.
Okay, I'm going to, there's no more discussion, I'm going to recommend that we adopt the draft ordinance and send it on to the full city council for approval. If there are no objections, that will be the order.
And should I take a roll call vote, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you may.
Council member Price?
Aye.
Council member Buscaino?
Yes.
And council member Rodriguez?
Aye.
That item passes.
Thank you, members. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That would be item number 13, which is a report from the chief legislative analyst relative to COVID-19 assistance for small business and preliminary industry gap analysis.
Good afternoon, council members. Chris Espinosa from the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. Before you is the CLA report providing a summary of federal and state actions, including the federal legislation and stimulus, state funding and executive orders, federal and state funds relative to small business, and a preliminary industry gaps analysis. If you look at the report, attachment one includes primarily the CARES Act, which provided 2.3 billion in funding, and then if you look to attachment number two, that would detail the state funding and executive orders that have occurred, including $19 million applied towards homeless services and a number of executive orders to address rent evictions both for residential and commercial tenants. When you look at the federal and state funds relative to small business, you are all very familiar with the Paycheck Protection Program, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, Small Business Administration Express Bridge Loans, and Small Business Debt Relief. Today, we learned about Metro funding a small business program through the Los Angeles County Development Authority. And this is entitled transient, well, it's targeted to transient-oriented communities. And it's called the Small Business Recovery Loan Program. And it provides $20,000 loans for TOC businesses. And the application period is from June 4th to June 11th. And that's a $20,000 loan that Metro has funded. So that's pretty important, and we'll make sure to work with EWDD to put that on their website. I think also, if you look at the LA CARES Corps and the website for the Economic and Workforce Development Department, they've done a very good job at outlining the number of small business-related programs that are available, including the Small Business Micro Loan Program. We did do just a preliminary industry and gaps analysis and found that there is funding, of course, for airlines, national security industries, hospitality industry, fishing industry, and the healthcare industry. But there are some gaps, including to 501(c)(6) organizations. And that would impact our Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board, which took a really a large hit because of the drop in transient occupancy taxes. The other areas where we saw gaps was, of course, the cannabis industry, mortgage loans that are not backed by Freddie Mae and Fannie Mac, and that's a significant amount. And then assistance for undocumented individuals. I think you're aware that there are some restrictions on undocumented individuals receiving funds. Our report has three recommendations, and they are very consistent with the way council is moving, even though this report was issued some time ago. As you know, the council approved the Ad Hoc Committee on COVID-19 Recovery and Neighborhood Investment. And there's some significant funds that that committee will be addressing. And just so, we'll summarize just a few of the large funding amounts that have come through. The largest being the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And of course, that's 694 million with some very stringent deadlines for expenditures. And then Community Development Block Grant Funds. We have an initial allocation of $31 million that has come to the city. And we have some time to spend, but it's COVID-related funds. Community Service Block Grant Funds, that's in $9 million range, and we expect to get that this summer. Housing with opportunities, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, that's at about $3 million. And then we have Emergency Solutions Grant Program. And that goes to homeless services, and that's about $16 million. So all, a lot of these funding amounts are also being factored into the citywide budget process. And so, in addition to kind of balancing the FEMA reimbursement process, and so, that's the way we're kind of tracking this, is we're going to track it through that ad hoc committee established by the council. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Do we have a sense of how many, how much funding has been dispersed through the SBA? Any of their programs and how we're working with legal business assistance groups, getting that SBA money out?
Yes, I'm not too sure about the SBA, but I mean, of course, the Paycheck Protection Program was extremely popular. And that funding was reduced to zero within about 13 days of being released. And so, Congress did pass another program called COVID 3.5. And they had to replenish that money with another $380 billion to assist with the Paycheck Protection Program. Some of the important things that are taking place is maybe like the Section 108 program, where the council has approved loan deferments on Section 108 loans. And what that's done is impacted our revenue on the consolidated plan side. So although we do provide relief for small businesses in one ways, it may affect us in a different, in different end.
Okay. Mrs. Rodriguez, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And welcome, Mr. Espinosa. I haven't seen you in your new role. I don't know if there's any Brown Act violations between you and your brother both being associated with committee today. But I just wanted to say hello. It's good to see you both.
Like the Cuomo brothers, like the Cuomo brothers in New York, Mr. Rodriguez.
That's right.
The little brothers, they have more grace.
I have a question regarding the CDBG allocation that you were discussing. Now, you mentioned that it was a $31 million allocation COVID-related. So how does that, how does that differ from our traditional expenditures associated with CDBG and that process?
Yes. Yeah, there does have to be a tie to the COVID response. Right now, there is one line item in the program year 46 year that has to do with microloans, small business microloans, and potentially boosting the funding there. But it can also be used to reimburse expenses. And we have until August of 2021 to make those expenditures, so we do have time to consider it. The $31 million is just the first allocation, and we do expect another allocation after that. But I could get back to you on, I mean, are there certain things that you're interested in funding?
Well, I'm just curious, because I know we've used, for example, you know, CDBG has been, had a variety of uses previously for infrastructure projects, housing. So was this allocation, does it differentiate from the way we traditionally expend CDBG dollars? And or, I mean, when you talk about COVID-related, are we talking about housing-specific types of initiatives? And what does that process look like? Is this all to be distributed amongst the ad hoc committee? Or is that to be by housing committee? Where, how, what is this process going to look like, given what historically CDBG has been an allocation through housing committees?
Yes. I think it will be a different type of funding source. I don't believe that you'll be able to fund very specific projects in terms of neighborhood improvements or economic development. My sense is that it will probably be larger programmatic type of funding allocations. And I believe it will be handled through the ad hoc committee. I believe in April, Councilmember Savio had introduced a motion to make sure that the supplemental, this COVID-related CDBG, make sure and go through the housing committee. But my sense is that it will be doubly referred, and it will end up coming through that ad hoc committee as well.
Got it.
I think the CAO will also probably look at the funds to address potential funding gaps within the overall citywide budget as well. But it may be a more programmatic source of funds.
Unlike, for example, CARES, which couldn't be used for supplying resources that were otherwise vacant as a result of the economic crisis. So this would actually help to plug those gaps potentially. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Joe?
I'm good. I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So we recommended this gap. What's so funny?
I was just trying to get some dirt between the Espinosas. I don't know.
Hey, they got the same smile as you are.
I thought Michael was the younger one. That's what he told me.
He looks like, he looks like, all right, I'm going to move to approve the CLA report. Can we take a vote on that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Price?
Aye.
Councilmember Buscaino?
Aye.
And Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Yes, that, that item is approved.
Oh, we got him. We got him. I think we got Michael.
We got them both. Next item?
Next, we have two more items. Item number 16 is a report from the Chief Legislative Analyst relative to the Citywide Bid Preference Programs and First Source Hiring Ordinance. This item was amended by the Ad Hoc Comprehensive Job Creation Plan Committee, and it's also referred to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee.
Okay, thank you. CLA and the BCA representatives are on the line, and we appreciate your presence. CLA, can you briefly run us through your report? And then I'll turn it over to my colleagues for any questions that they may have on this very important item.
Sure. Good afternoon. Brian Randall with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. Before you is a report from our office in response to council instruction, where the council instructed the CLA to report with recommendations to update the Transitional Jobs Opportunities Program and First Source Hiring Ordinance. The motion further directed the Board of Public Works to prepare and present an outreach plan for the updated programs. The Transitional Job Opportunities Program, Local Business Preference Program, and Small Local Business Program are procurement programs administered by the Bureau of Contract Administration. These programs provide bid preferences to businesses located within Los Angeles County that bid on city contracts. The First Source Hiring Ordinance is administered by the BCA and Economic and Workforce Development Department. This program differs from the programs mentioned a moment ago in that the First Source Hiring Ordinance does not offer a bid preference, but is simply a requirement for all contractors who engage in business with the city. The ordinance, specifically, the ordinance requires the contractor to notify EWDD of a job opportunity that is created as a result of being awarded the contract. The BCA has reported that these programs are underutilized or have not been used at all. Because increasing local business participation in city contracts and increasing employment for transitional workers are priorities for the council, the report provides recommendations to restructure these programs. Our office consulted with the BCA, City Attorney, EWDD, Council Districts 2 and 15, and the Mayor's Office on these proposed changes. For the Transitional Job Opportunities Program, Local Business Preference Program, and Small Local Business Program, we recommend the following: that they be combined into a single program to be, and that the current Transitional Job Opportunities Program contract threshold be increased from 100,000 to 150,000. That local small business enterprises and local subcontractors receive additional opportunities to qualify for bid preferences. That the Board of Public Works develop and implement an outreach program. And that criteria for businesses to qualify will be revised as needed. For the First Source Hiring Ordinance, we recommend that the BCA be instructed to clarify guidance to EWDD on procedures after receiving employment opportunity. That EWD be required to change the period from seven to 14 days for the submittal of an employment opportunity. And that BCA be instructed to increase partnerships with other city departments regarding the First Source Hiring Process, including providing training to staff and contractors. We recommend approval of these modifications and that the City Attorney be requested to prepare and present the necessary ordinances. We further recommend that BCA be instructed to report to council in six months with the status update and that such an update be provided annually in future years. And that concludes our report. I believe BCA, EWDD, and City Attorney staff are here as well, and we can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, members, any comments, any thoughts?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do.
You've got the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, I got two teenagers in the house, so bear with me here. I have, this proposal, I want to commend the city staff. It's been a long time coming. In March of 2018, I drafted a motion requesting departments to reform the Transitional Jobs Opportunity Program and the First Source Hiring Ordinance. And both of these programs have the potential of being life-changing tools, as we call them, but also historically have been used a handful of times. Myself, along with other colleagues, have championed this motion because something that is very important to me, making sure that everyone has a fair shot at getting a job. Guys, I'm on. Steady employment has been shown to be the driving factor in preventing someone from falling into homelessness or returning to jail. And the city can and should play that critical role of facilitating these jobs. The final product before us today, I feel, is a strong proposal that will incentivize contractors who do business with us to hire transitional workers. And the recommendations you see as a result of a great collaboration and years of hard work. And along the way, we've made the strategic decision to combine the TJOP and the Small Local Business Preference Program and the Local Business Preference Program to make the overall program more robust. We drew from other cities, the county and state for inspiration. And for example, the county across the street does a county's social enterprise program, which is effective. We have worked in close partnership with the Bureau of Contract Administration, EWDD, Bureau of Public Works, City Attorney's Office, and all council offices. So it has been a love fest in this effort. We do have a representative from the BCA with us. I just had a quick question. Maybe, I believe, Linda, Linda on?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, quick question. How does the proposal before us make the TJOP stronger? Could you explain the recommended change in that threshold, the contract threshold? What happens with contracts above the 150K?
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, for contracts under, well, the TJOP threshold being increased to $150,000. And for contracts greater than $150,000, that's where our local business preference comes into play. And the way we envision this happening is for local businesses, should they either be a certified TJOP or subcontract to a certified TJOP, they can earn additional preference points in their contract. And that's how we're bringing TJOP into the larger contract.
Understood. Thanks for that clarification. I just feel that we are just a few steps away strengthening the city's TJOP and the First Source Hiring Ordinance. So appreciate all the departments and all the key players involved in making this happen. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your leadership on this.
Thank you. It's much better for your leadership. I know some you've worked hard, long and hard on, and we appreciate the fact that the departments are coming together in a way that they've not done before, collaborating in a way that will move us forward. Mrs. Rodriguez, any comments?
No, I just want to say hi to Linda. Hope everyone at ConNad is doing well. Thank you all for your work. We appreciate you.
Okay, so we will recommend to concur with the recommendations of the Ad Hoc Jobs Committee. And Mr. Clerk, will take a vote on that matter?
Yes. Councilmember Price?
Aye.
Councilmember Buscaino?
Here. I mean, aye, sorry.
And Councilmember Rodriguez.
I am here.
Aye. Aye, here, eh, whatever.
All right. No money to go.
So that item is approved.
All right. Thank you. What's next on our agenda, Mr. Clerk?
The last item on the agenda is item number 18. This is a report from, a joint report from the Economic and Workforce Development Department and Workforce Development Board and the CAO relative to the transfer of Los Angeles County Summer Youth Employment Grant Funding to Manage Career Solutions and Company for Payment Services.
Okay, you know, many of us were concerned about summer youth programs being reduced with these budget cuts. I'm happy to see we're going to be able to do some version of summer youth deployment this summer, given the emergency. I know we have EWDD on the line. Can you give us an overview of how the program will operate this year and how many participants we plan to reach?
Hello, council members. This is Gerardo Rualcava with EWDD. And yeah, so we are very happy to report that, you know, despite all of the closures related to the pandemic, our service providers continue to operate. So first, you know, our 14 youth source centers continue to provide virtual services to all to all, uh, uh, youth source center participants. Um, you know, our, our system has actually, you know, responded very well to the pandemic, they've, you know, been very creative in, in developing new approaches to continue services, uh, and critical services to all participants. Uh, with respect to, you know, the summer youth employment, uh, program moving forward, we are developing new strategies that will allow us to move many of our services, uh, to virtual services. Um, you know, one, a couple examples, uh, one of the key components of our, of our, uh, work experience program is a twenty-hour work readiness curriculum that is administered, traditionally that was administered in the classroom, uh, participants were paid for their participation in that program. We've now been able to move that service online through, um, through what, what is called the, uh, transitional, uh, Transitional Aged Youth World of Work Curriculum. So that curriculum is now, uh, available online.
What age group, what age group are we talking about? Which age group?
This is, the age group is, uh, sixteen to twenty-four. Yeah, and, you know, we're, we're also working with the county to develop, and, um, additional online resources that we can use to continue, um, continue work experience services during the, during the pandemic, um, so, you know, the, so the, the model that is being developed is like a learn and earn model where, where youth are able to participate in educational experiences and are, um, such as credit recovery, and are, you know, and are paid, uh, for their participation during that program.
How many youth, how many youth do you think will be able to accommodate in that program?
So through our direct placement, um, we're projecting a budget of about twelve million dollars for next year, which will place, um, and again, uh, we're still working through the numbers because of the minimum wage increase, but it will be approximately fifty-five hundred youth that will be pa, uh, placed into direct, uh, work experience.
That's a good deal. And that compares to, uh, what we've done, what we've done in the past, how's that compared?
It, it's comparable to what we're doing this year, so again, uh, again, because, um, our, our biggest funding source for direct placement is the county. Um, you know, they, in the current year, I think it's about nine point eight million dollars in resources that were allocated to the city to provide work experience, um, though we've not heard, uh, final funding amounts for the next year, we are, um, going forward with at least projecting level funding. Um, you know, we are working closely with our partners in, in the county to, to be able to continue funding at, at a minimally at the level that we received this year.
Okay, Mrs. Rodriguez, you've been a strong advocate for youth programs, summer youth programs especially, any comments or thoughts about, uh, this initiative?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm delighted to see that it's going to continue and move forward, I just want to make sure that the youth are getting paid. Um, did, uh, did the circumstances related to, uh, Mr. Rualcava, some of those, uh, programs weren't administering the paycheck, has that all been resolved?
Yes, and this is actually part of our resolution to, to those issues, so, you know, because of the large volume of youth that, you know, we, and our process, and, and the issue that I believe you raised, you know, was specific to, um, an internal program, so it was our Youth Opportunity Movement Site, um, but because of the administrative burden of, of processing as many payrolls as we do, um, you know, we've now moved, this, this action will allow us to fully move all of our, or to automate our payroll processing. So, you know, we all youth that are, that participate into the program will be paid through, um, ADP and, and automated payroll system.
Terrific, terrific, thank you for that. Uh, yeah, I mean, these are very important programs, and, uh, the last thing we want to do is hold up the youth from having access to the various, uh, checks that they've earned, and, uh, so I'm glad you have reconciled that and appreciate that. Um, what has been the, uh, the distribution of, uh, job applications, do you have a, a breakout of, uh, where they're generally being forced, or where the demand is the highest?
We, we, and, and I don't have a report in front of me, but we can provide you with a breakdown of, of, um, each of the regions where our services are being provided. Um, you know, as, as a matter of practice, we do, uh, try to allocate, uh, resources to where they're most needed, um, so in terms of, you know, our allocations that occur at the time that we're, are making funding recommendations, we do take, um, need into account, and, and we do, you know, make those, uh, allocations based on, again, where's the, the greatest need. The, the other update that, you know, I do want to mention, um, that we are working on is a new Hire L.A. platform. Um, you know, we have been working, and, um, recently, uh, hired a new contractor to help us develop a, a new platform that's going to allow us to automate, um, the application process and, and also the selection, so there is a, a lottery system that is used for those that apply online, so this will, you know, allow us, again, to automate the process and, and to fairly distribute funds across, you know, the, the different parts of, of the region. Uh, so, you know, we, we just started that process, the, the Workforce Development Board approved, uh, the funding at their last meeting, and we are looking for, I, and we do have a very aggressive timeline to begin the, or to roll out the new system, so we are looking at, at the middle of, of June to have a new system operational and, and be able to, um, be available for participants to apply for summer youth employment, uh, starting July one.
Okay, terrific, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great. Mr. Buscaino, any comments?
I'm good, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, members, thank you very much, uh, want to thank, special thanks to E W D D for their leadership in moving us forward. Uh, I see, uh, our GM, Carolyn Hall is on. Carolyn, thank you for your leadership, uh, as we move, uh, as we move forward to the summer. Uh, I'm going to recommend, members, that we approve the CAO report, and let's take a vote, Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Buscaino?
Aye.
And Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
That item passes.
Thank you, members, uh, members of the public, I believe, uh, Mr. Clerk, what else is before us?
That clears the desk, Mr. Chair.
All right, there's no, uh, further business at this time, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, members, and members of the public.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody, see ya. Okay, I will stop recording now.